Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Monday, September 22, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website, and for guest speakers, please do not turn off your microphones. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. Mosley, Ms. Kell Smith, Ms. Warwick, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Strasburger Chair, seven members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, residents in Squirrel Hill. Candidate for the office of mayor of the city for 2025. Last week, there was a proclamation, or the week before, for Pittsburgh not being a place for hate, no place for hate. So you opened the door on that one. That has to be a concern of this council. Al-Quds is the capital of Palestine. Yerushalayim is the capital of Israel. I say that because the Palestinian people say they have a state, not because anybody on this council does, or the UN does, or anybody does. And so does the state of Israel. They both exist, and they both should exist. So is that city no place for hate? There's no place for hate of genocide against Jews in Germany? No place for hate of what the UN Commission on Genocide and the Society for Genocide Studies say is the genocide being committed by the Israeli military and the Israeli government against the Palestinian people, and the slaughter of children. Now, Jesus the Jew was famous for saying things like, if you offend one of the little ones, it'd be better if a millstone be put around his neck and cast into the sea. That's exactly what my view is. I think that this council is irresponsible, and the office of mayor is irresponsible, in not taking a position on what it is that is being done against the Palestinian people in Gaza and the West Bank. I think it is completely irresponsible on the part of individuals who are running for, competing for, the office of councillor representing Squirrel Hill. Warwick and Ms. Strasburger, do you really think that Dr. Rabbi Walter Jacob would be approving of this? Do you think that Theodore Herzl, who was the founder of political Zionism, would be happy about this situation? I think not. I was in Israel at the Central Zionist Archives to do research on the creation of the state of Israel. Nobody here that I know of in there, nor Mr. O'Connor, who invited kids to come in here and sing the National Anthem of Israel. We don't need that.
Our next speaker is Eliana Scott Tonis.
Hello, I'm Eliana Scott Tonis, Squirrel Hill neighborhood, District 5. I'm here to ask you to support the legislation being introduced today that would add a person's past or present housing status as a protected class for the city's Civil Rights Code and Housing. I moved here almost two years ago from Seattle, where housing affordability is a serious issue, and every year more people are experiencing homelessness. In my work with the Housing for All Coalition, and as the chair of the Community Advisory Committee for one of the city's tiny house villages, I had the honor of meeting and working alongside many of my houseless or housing insecure neighbors, and have seen how seemingly small steps can make a life-altering difference. I believe this piece of legislation is one of those. We have the opportunity here to both prevent some of our neighbors from becoming unsheltered, and to remove the barrier to reentering housing. I know a woman who became unhoused when fleeing domestic violence with her son, and after time sheltering with friends was rejected for housing because she did not have recent enough rental history. When I met her, she was being swept for the fourth time that week and was in despair. I know an elderly woman who wanted to spend her early retirement traveling. She put her things in storage and stayed with friends and relatives around the country. Now that she's becoming more frail, she would like her own little place. But again, her lack of recent rental history is making that challenging. I have a friend, a veteran, who ran a small business doing home repairs and had a serious back injury. He lost his home and his business. He's recovered now and working again, but unable to find housing that will accept him after a few years of homelessness. In my first weeks here in Pittsburgh, I met a neighbor who was sheltering in the parking garage of the Squirrel Hill Library. He's also a veteran, and Pittsburgh has been his hometown his entire life. His affordable apartment was torn down, and he hasn't been able to afford housing since. He shared some history of the neighborhood, and described things he's seen, and it all sounded eerily familiar: the rising rents, the shrinking social safety net, and how hard it is to reenter housing. It sounded like Seattle a couple of decades ago. I could sit here all day sharing these stories, each unique, and yet each a microcosm of the widespread suffering many of our neighbors are experiencing. Pittsburgh's housing affordability situation is not yet to the crisis point it is in Seattle, which means we have the opportunity to act now. This one little adjustment isn't a panacea. We can't solve housing affordability that easily. But it's a small step in the right direction, towards a city where all our neighbors can continue to afford to live: our nurses, teachers, sanitation workers, and elders. Thank you for your support for this legislation. And as I prepare to enter Rosh Hashanah, I look forward to working with all of you in this next year on more ways we can achieve our vision of a just, accessible neighborly city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next and final registered speaker is Ikona Halmaquina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Chief Ikona Halmaquina. I am the Grand Inka of the Aroko Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I would like to personally thank Teresa Kell Smith for voting no with a conscience to Bill 2219. I am appalled that eight out of nine city council members voted nearly unanimously to give even more power to a rogue independent governmental organization utilizing power under the PA Land Banking Act of 2014 newly established. You have essentially given land that you don't even own to a private company without keeping any regulatory control. This is insane. This is wrong. The public wasn't notified in advance of this egregious transfer of power. The public has a right to know. Free and informed prior consent wasn't given. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. For the past 10 years, they themselves admit that they weren't effective, they weren't efficient, and they surely weren't equitable. And we, the people, want and demand transparency. All rights, title, and interest of the people shall be considered as a vital part of this process. It's not rocket science, and nor did it ever take too long to buy a city-owned property prior to Bill 2219. I know because I did it successfully, four times. I too share the same concerns of Councilman Kell Smith: not enough oversight, and this housing crisis will only get worse. I urge city council members present today and those who are not present to do the thing: put people over profit and plant shady trees and stop making shady deals. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further registered speakers. We will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our standing committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee, and we have new papers, Bill 2241.
Bill 2241, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving a 2024 Capital Budget: The Proposed 2024 Community Development Program and the 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by Decreasing Facility Improvements (Sports Facilities) by $180,000 and Increasing Facility Improvements (Recreation and Senior Centers) by $180,000."
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2241, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2245.
Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to enter into, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, a lease agreement or agreements with Bike Share Pittsburgh, Inc., to utilize a portion of that certain city-owned parcel, 29M15102, Fourth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, 90 Wormsor Way, Council District 3, for the purpose of placing and maintaining a shipping container to be used for storage of equipment at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2245, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation.
I'm abstaining today till I look into a little bit more.
One abstention. Bill 2246.
Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to document local cooperation and Housing Authority's agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for Bedford Dwelling Phase III housing development.
Motion to approve.
Discussion.
Could you talk us a little bit about it?
Sure.
What the agreement includes?
This is actually the third cooperation agreement we would now have entered into with the Housing Authority to support the neighborhood choice redevelopment of Bedford dwellings.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2246, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Is there a motion on invoices? Discussion. I have two notes from our Assistant Budget Director. One is, there are two invoices for Hartzell Machine Works that together total almost $10,000, and both are for parts and supplies purchased for the bomb squad. But our diligent council budget office confirmed with the police that they're in fact separate purchases, with one order placed in May and the other in July, so we do not require a waiver. And there are three invoices for Markel Supply that together total over $5,000, and they appear to be three separate invoices for three separate items. So it looks like we should not have to waive either. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. Is there a motion on interdepartmental transfers?
To approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of interdepartmental transfers, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Transfers are approved. Is there a motion on P-cards?
There moves.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
P-cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee, chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Bill 2238, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Bronner Group K-9 Services LLC in an Amount Not to Exceed $9,500 for Payment of One K-9 Unit.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2238, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill is approved. That moves us to 2239.
Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, into an agreement or agreements with Kilo 3 Consulting Agency, LLC, for trainer-led onsite K-9 training, cost not to exceed $8,500 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2239, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, chaired by Councilmember Warwick.
Bill 2243, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to enter into certain temporary construction easements in order to advance the Fraser Street Steps replacement project at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2243, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2244.
Resolution Amending Resolution 562 of 2019, which authorize the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and ATC Group Services, LLC, for architectural and engineering design services related to the stormwater management and renovation of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police firing range, by increasing the total spend by $380,740 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $750,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2244, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Human Resources Committee, chaired by Councilperson Charlin.
Bill 2242, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct, Article 5, Chapter 65104, by adding the definition for the protected class of housing status, amending 65903, to include past or present housing status as a class protected from housing discrimination, as well as simplifying 65903 by not listing each protected class in each subsection.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The only thing I have on this, Madam Clerk, could I be added as a...
Discussion, yeah, and all the columns.
Just added as a sponsor. I asked when we introduced this for that. If anyone else says discussion.
Sure. Councilmember Warwick.
Oh, I was just gonna have the folks from the commission come up to talk about it.
If they would like to, yes.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, sure. So, you know, once you state your name and title, and then also just talk to us a little bit about what this change addresses, the problem that it's addressing, and how it hopes to help solve.
Rachel Shepard, Executive Director for the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations.
Christopher Sodan, the Deputy Director for the City of Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. And, well, so, as stated, this would be a change to our civil rights codes in order to add housing status as a protected status within the City of Pittsburgh. That would include any sort of past, present housing situation, living on the street, living in a shelter, any other circumstance that you might be able to consider that may show up as what some might consider to be a blight on someone's housing record. I want to be very clear, this is not source of income protection. This is not any kind of established right to housing. I could do any of those things, but the Pennsylvania Supreme Court's interpretation is that we are not allowed to do that. So what this would do practically is three things. And if you'll permit me some time to go over the list, and bear with me because it might take a little bit of time here. First is, what we're seeing increasingly around the City of Pittsburgh, especially with new, larger developments that are coming in, is property managers asking for essentially what is a housing resume, which is to say a statement of the entire history of someone's housing. Any gaps in that housing resume, and you could be bounced from consideration for housing, and your application could be thrown out by that landlord. Considering that a lot of these new developments are sitting about 40% vacant right now, one wonders exactly what they're holding those units for, but that's a discussion that goes to another matter and another time. We are currently seeing some major uptick in housing vacancies that are coming as a result of that. Folks are looking for long periods of time, they're searching for housing. The second reason that we are pushing this comes from discussions that I've had with groups that are actually working on placement for people who are housing insecure or are currently homeless. The discussion varies a bit depending upon what part of the city that we're looking at. In my talks with organizations on the East End, what they're seeing more is that even when they approach a friendly property manager who may know that their organization works to place people who are housing insecure, they feel the need to dance around that point in order to, in order to be able to find folks' placement. The housing manager may be friendly, but oftentimes the property owner is not. This creates backups. This creates time delays. When you're working in this field, time delays are, they can be detrimental to finding a person placement. The second problem that we're seeing comes to us from some of the things that I'm getting from folks who are in the South Hills. By their description, they're just getting locked out completely. Whenever they approach a property owner who finds out that they are an organization that works in placement for the homeless or for housing insecure folks, that is basically the end of the conversation. And unfortunately, that ends up hitting a lot of people who would normally qualify under some of our other protected classes for protections, such as people fleeing domestic violence situations, and folks who have disabilities. So this becomes a means for a lot of landlords to be able to discriminate by other means because of gaps in a person's housing history. What we're kind of looking for right now, what we're hoping for right now from this, is that this legislation would make our organizations that are already working in housing placement more effective and better than the work that they are doing. When you think about the shortage that we currently have of units in the city, in our shelters, and the want and need that's created by that shortage, oftentimes, once folks leave a shelter for the night, they need to get right back in line if they have any chance of finding a bed in the morning. How are you supposed to find work? How are you supposed to make your appointments if that's the situation that you are in? When we are able to help people who are closer to finding placement, people who meet all of the other potential criteria that are needed to find housing but cannot find it because of their housing status, when we are able to help those folks out, we're going to clear up more spaces for the people at the bottom who really need help. And the third practical benefit of this is that currently we're seeing a focused campaign against our urban centers, here in Pittsburgh in particular, that is attempting to portray our cities as being dangerous places that are full of people who barely merit the description of a person. And those who are homeless have become the focus of a lot of that media and national attention. We have a lot of mandates that are coming down from the executive branch in Washington right now that are explicitly targeted at the homeless population. I don't think I need to reiterate some of the comments that were made on Fox News last week. Folks who want to embolden all of the worst impulses in people, there are thousands of them out there, and they speak loudly and they speak proudly about what they mean to do. They go on every day dehumanizing people, and they call that values, and they pretend like those values are universal. I think that what we need to do right now is make a statement of our own values. I firmly believe in my heart of hearts that the great majority of people will do the right thing if they're given the chance to do so. And if we unite and we speak up for humanity and for the humanity of others, and we make a statement of our own values, we can work to embolden those people who want to do the right thing, and we can move forward together, and hopefully things will finally start to turn around and improve. So appreciate your support. Any other questions?
Yeah, so just a few questions, just sort of on the practical side. So one question, when it comes to, so this would essentially say that a landlord could not ask about previous housing status, or just could not use previous housing status in their decision-making?
Could not use, and like a lot of our other provisions that we have, if there's any sort of formal process of asking that stuff about past housing status, that could theoretically be used as evidence if, you know, it turned out that somebody did appear to be discriminated against on the basis of housing status.
Okay. And so for landlords, though, because I know that this is absolutely going to come up.
Yeah.
Previous eviction status, that is publicly available information, correct?
That is correct.
So if you have been evicted, your landlord doesn't need to ask you that. They can simply look it up.
Yeah.
Right? Okay, so just to clarify that for anybody who's, you know, and in those eviction records, does it, does it, I've never looked, does it go into why the person was evicted? Or is it just like that eviction was filed, is it just like...
I believe it'll show the result of the eviction, so whether that was something that they were able to settle and dismiss, or if it was, you know, something where they actually had to remove a person.
Okay, but it wouldn't say like failure to pay versus unpaid water bill versus causing problems in the whatever, with the unit, for example. We don't, you know, I don't know either. Not sure. Okay, that's okay.
Uncertain at this time.
Uncertain. Okay, I was just curious, because I know that that's something that landlords will be, you know, is so... Yeah, that is interesting. I hadn't, I hadn't, so, okay, so if a landlord is asking for the housing resume, right, and I understand, it's sort of like with a job resume, right? Like you have a gap, and, you know, the gap can be held against you, given, you know. So how would this work for folks? So let's say, so you're saying that they're, so first of all landlords are asking for the housing resume, and that is what we feel is getting people sort of knocked out of, out of the running for units. Second is that unhoused folks are also, oh, because they are currently unhoused? Because they don't have addresses? So how is that, is that the issue that they don't have an address to provide, or?
Yes, but it's...
I'm just asking for like the how, like, so what's happening, yeah?
It's, I mean, it can go to that. It can go to the fact that their address traces back to a shelter.
Okay.
It can just be the result of a conversation where you say, oh, by the way, I'm out on the street right now.
Got it.
Or a service provider who is conducting social services can say that in a conversation, and then that can be a basis for deselection, as it were, for your application.
So you're saying that there are other... Okay, I'm just trying to understand, like, the... So you're saying that there are other, okay, I'm just trying to understand like the, some clarity around how we determine that that, that that is the, the issue, that that is what is happening, right? That, that it's your housing status that is getting you knocked out of the running versus something else.
Right, well, as it, as it happens right now, oftentimes it's just brazenly stated or you won't get a callback.
Got it.
And in a lot of cases, that is also the case of our other protections where if people mean to discriminate, once they figure out the basis on which they mean to discriminate, you simply will not be called back without explanation.
Okay. And how do we investigate that? Like how do we?
We utilize our partners to do fair housing testing.
Okay.
If we have an inkling that that is what's going on in a particular situation, that's the short story. Yeah, just that we can do testing. Also, we always tell people, trust your gut. If you know that you have something lacking in your housing history and you have a feeling that that may have been it, you could start that conversation with the landlord and that it might come out during that conversation and you may not have to guess anymore. But that's also for us to investigate. So if they do have a true belief that they were denied based on the fact that they have a gap in their housing history or are coming directly from a shelter, they can come to us and we will do that investigation and collect the facts to determine whether that happened or not.
So, I mean, and if it's, because I'm just kind of curious how it works. So, so what would you, would you sort of run two tests of, of, you know, two identical applications but for the, the gap in the housing status or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that is essentially how we do fair housing testing in the city of Pittsburgh is we work with the Fair Housing Partnership and they train their testers to go out and do what we call matched pair testing where they will have identically similar parties to go and inquire in the same way from the same housing provider and dependent upon the reactions of what they get back from the housing provider will determine whether it's showing a likelihood that discrimination is occurring. And we currently do that primarily with familial status testing. So it is like that where you have like identical parties going forward to pretend to be tenants, potential tenants, and one of them has children and one of them does not. Or maybe one of them is pregnant and one of them is not. So it would be similar in this case.
Okay, okay. And, and then finally, it's that the organizations who are working to help folks get housing, they're just sort of not getting a callback.
Correct.
And, and, and we're thinking it's because they're calling and saying, you know, I mean, whatever, for example, I'm from whatever Rent Help, P G H or some, some organization that helps place people in housing or I'm from Allegheny Link or something like that. And they're not getting a callback.
Correct.
Okay, so, and that would, and that test would be like, I'm from this organization versus I'm just from random, how, you know, someone who does, who's sort of like a, a middle person for connecting people with housing.
Yeah, and there's not an ideal situation for testing in every case. So when we're talking about a, maybe a third party referral from one of those placement agencies, it would more likely come to us as an actual intake, something that we would pursue in investigation. And as we review the records and how they, how they reviewed that person's housing history, how they reviewed their credit history, how they reviewed for the basics of, you know, being a tenant in that, in that space, that's when we would discover what the real difference between them is. So if you're looking at, you know, if they had the option of a tenant who is, maybe, maybe has a slightly lower credit score, maybe has a slightly lower income, but they were chosen over a person who has a gap in their housing history or is getting that assistance from an agency, it's likely because they are making a snap judgment on the fact that that person has a gap in their housing history or is coming from a shelter. And that's the discrimination we're trying to avoid. Just have that, have each individual be seen as an individual and not make these, jump to conclusions essentially over a particular portion of their history or their, their current status.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this, this makes sense to me, so I'll, that's, that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you all. I appreciate you bringing this forward to us. I want to say about the importance, but also acknowledge council's work over the last at least five years, that we have been really focused on how much the people who are living outside, the population size has increased. God knows we've worked with the county, we've staffed up, you know, more than a dozen social workers of our own who have, right, that we never had as a capacity as a city, who have actually done a lot of the matchmaking work for the county because the county wasn't able to keep up, right? So we've literally, as a city, added an entirely new capacity that we never had before for whatever, 200 years or whatever it is, in order to help people get their lives back. So I just want to make sure that we don't brush over that part because we know that with the partnership with the Department of Human Services in Allegheny County over the last year and a half, certainly, we've know that, I think they've just, I just heard announced on Friday, they've really gotten 500 people indoors and some of them have moved on to permanent housing. But this is the exact kind of reason that what you bring forward is, is so important because we've been focusing on increasing the amount of transitional housing especially where people aren't just in overnight shelters. And we've made a significant shift over the last three years, especially last year and a half where people are in, you know, have a door they can lock, have a roof over their head, have privacy and security, but are, that's still temporary housing that they're supposed to see in not more than two years. And so we don't want that to count against them when they're finally been on a waitlist for permanent housing for a year and a half and are, you know, now got the voucher or there's a space opened up. We don't want those landlords discriminating on people. And I'm alarmed that there are these things called housing, like we're referring to as housing resumes. Like that's just pretty shocking to me that you would have to account, I mean, I'm old, you know, I'm going to be, I'm like 59 and a half. I would not want to account for every single moment of my life that will you do with an employment resume, right? And or if I were, you know, having to apply for an apartment or something like that. So certainly, we, we, we want to make sure that we're doing what we can with the capacity that we have, the Commission for Human Relations. So I appreciate that bringing forward. I'm also though going to have to fact check about this vacancy rate because there, we certainly do not have a 40% vacancy rate in my district. So where is the, I'm not sure where that's from.
To clarify, I said some of these units, not the entire city.
Okay, very good. Okay, yeah, I didn't want to.
Some of these newer buildings.
Yeah, right, okay, so yeah, the, you know, I do periodically ask and, and I mean, it's like less than 10% vacancy, which is pretty much full, you know, so of all the apartments, because there've been several thousands of apartments built, depending on whether you're going back five years or 10 years. We've added a lot of dwelling units in some parts of the city and, you know, when I, when I ask about them, they're, they're not empty. Sometimes people assume they are, but they're, they're full, so that's why we're kind of struggling with, with doing both things, adding, adding more housing capacity especially. I don't think I have any other questions, but I do, I just want to say I appreciate you bringing this forward. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I just actually want to thank Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Warwick for their questions because they gave me a little bit more clarity on what's happening, but, so I did have a whole list of things, but I think they have a better idea of what you're trying to accomplish. My only concern is that the more restrictions we put on landlords, the less rentals we're going to have in the area because I think we're putting so many restrictions on landlords that we're, I think we're preventing people from wanting to even own in the city of Pittsburgh. And I know there's a lot of people questioning development and they're not developing in my area, I can tell you, unless it's Mount Washington, but you don't see a lot of development happening in our side of town. So for me, I worry that the unintended consequences is what I worry about. But it's not only that, I just feel like there's so many efforts all working against one another instead of working collectively and, you know, having a nice flow of resources. I've said since I've been here, I wish that we would work with the magistrates, making sure that we have the Housing Opportunity Fund and people there to help people when they are starting, starting to fall through the cracks a little bit, that there's some help immediately to help people stay in their homes or to find a home. And then I wish that we would work with, with your department, with all the other different things, working on housing, Housing Authority, the U R A, everyone working together to make sure, because I can't believe the millions of dollars we have spent. We have spent a ton of money and have done a ton of work trying to address this issue. And yet every time I go downtown, it's heartbreaking. It, I mean, it really is. And we can say that it's not happening and we pretend everything, but there's photos, there's, you can see things, I mean, people, and it's not just downtown anymore. It's spreading into our neighborhoods and we're starting to see a lot of it. And so for me, I want to see real solutions for people. I think it sounds great, all the talking points sound great, all the community groups that come, you know, wanting funding for all this, for all the things that they're doing. I don't mind giving anybody any money if they're really going to solve the problem. You know what I mean? If they, if you, if people can actually see the result. So for me, my concern is the unintended consequences. And, you know, for us, our issue is the absentee landlords, you know, that they're just starting to really infiltrate into some of our neighborhoods. And I don't know how we address some of that through this, through this process. And I, I don't know, I just, I think I'd like to talk a little bit more about that, the whole process and how we're not going to have an unintended consequence.
Thank you.
Do you have something you want to say?
No, no, yeah, and, and I appreciate the concerns that you have about, about people who are already, already in the market selling off their properties because there are too many restrictions. I don't know how, how we can solve that with the tools that we have as a city, but.
I think we have a lot of tools, that's the whole thing. We have the tools, let's put them together and create an opportunity for people to really have the uplift, the, the employment programs, you know, any kind of drug and alcohol counseling. They should all be working, you know, hand in hand to make sure we're really lifting people up and stop all this money, we're spending all this money and not having any better results is what I'm trying to say. Yeah, I see what we've, we've eliminated some things, but you see, it's, it grows and it, it changes with the weather and, you know, depending on what the season is, the heating bills get out of hand or whatever, you never know what's going to create more homelessness or more addiction problems or whatever the, the issues are. So for me, I just always thought we should work a lot more collaboratively, just to really, I mean, to really solve the issues, not just do a little Band-Aid here, a little Band-Aid there and spend millions and millions of dollars repeatedly and putting more restrictions on landlords who already don't like working with us. You know what I mean? That we're actually saying, okay, let's, how can we help you? And that we're working with the Disruptive Properties Group because we also have that as well. So how do we know these people, some of the people aren't listed as problematic in a neighborhood and the community said that, we can't deal with this anymore? How do we know that we're not saying, well, you're going to have them back in your neighborhood just, you know, a couple doors down? You know what I mean? I'm just, I'm just saying we need to work together.
Yeah. In the absence of a collective like housing group for the city of Pittsburgh, we, we just wanted to do our part because we recognize that there are all these different things going on and these efforts being made. You know, it's not lost on us, the, the efforts that are being made to address the, the unhoused populations and the support through O C H S and, and others to, to get people the resources that they need. This was just the commission's small piece in terms of what we've been hearing and the prejudice that comes along with being an unhoused person or, or a person who maybe isn't necessarily unhoused but has, you know, a transient living situation, they're couch surfing because they're, maybe they're LGBT and their parents kicked them out. Or you're, you know, and it's in a domestic violence situation and you've just been trying to put all the pieces back together since having that incident because, you know, you can't always get the funding that you need to get into a space, you can't always, you know, repair your credit very quickly. The financial abuse that goes along with D V is, is devastating. So in terms of, you know, what we were looking at here, it's, it goes beyond the unhoused population truly. We were even exploring this in terms of students who have little to no rental history. You know, if they're coming straight from student housing, if they're coming straight from their parents' house, they don't have rental history. And if they don't have that, are they being denied opportunities in, in spaces where they could be getting secure housing and maybe becoming a full-time member of the city of Pittsburgh community?
So I'm going to say, I don't talk about this too often, but I could have been one of those people. I could have been homeless. I was a widow with two kids and didn't have anywhere to go. If it weren't for my mother, I would have been. So I'm very sensitive to it. But I'm also very sensitive to sometimes government is the worst enemy in, in trying to do good. We, we oftentimes make such mistakes that we, we have to undo it, you know, a couple years later. So I'm very sensitive to the whole thing because I want to make sure whatever we're doing, we're not going to have unintended consequences that will actually end up having less rentals available for people because we're going to be less, less quality landlords willing to work in the city of Pittsburgh.
And if I may, you'd mentioned you're working with the tools that we currently have, you know, when, when I was putting this together, we talked to, we talked to the Lawrenceville Uniteds, we talked to the Light of Lives, we talked to the Shark Tiers Valley Group and really what this is about is, is taking what those groups are already doing, those groups that are outside of government right now and making their work more effective. Because, you know, making, making, you know, in, in terms of, as I said, the practical outcome, you know, beyond the, the civil rights conversation. Because being able to lift some of those, those barriers that they find in the way of people when they're trying to find placement for them is going to help the whole mechanism move along a lot smoother than it is right now. And as I said, frees up more resources that we can then devote towards helping people who are further down at the bottom. So I'm, I'm very sensitive to what you're saying about, you know, using the tools that we have right now. Practically, I think that this would make those tools more effective.
I'm going to vote in favor today, but I'm just going to, I think I'm going to work with my colleagues to try to put something together so that we're forcing people to work together a little bit more collaboratively. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so Chris.
Yeah.
You had mentioned, you said that we see this specifically in the South Hills. Elaborate for me.
Um, when I was talking with some folks over at the Shark Tiers Valley Group, they had told me about, well, basically, when they deal with their activities.
They being whom?
The, the placement organizations.
Okay.
When they are looking for placement for folks in a domestic violence situation, when they're looking for placement for, for single women with families, when they're looking for placement for people who have disabilities, oftentimes, sort of tangentially, that, that lack of, lack of a stable housing history becomes the excuse to, for, for property owners to block those individuals from getting housing. And basically, they described it as a complete shutout. As I said, it was a little different talking to other people in the city where they said something they felt they kind of needed to dance around a little bit. But what Felicia reported to me was that it's a total shutout in a lot of circumstances that they can't even find placement for folks because it's not even being offered.
What is a total shutout? Explain it.
Once they find out that they have a history of homelessness, that's the end of the conversation because they presume this person is an undue risk even if they meet all of the other burdens.
Okay, here, here's what I asked you. I understand all that.
Yeah.
We talked about all that. You specifically pointed to the South Hills.
Yes.
Tell me where, what data you have and in what neighborhoods you have that in to make you say that publicly.
I may be, I may be misremembering the name of the group, but I believe there was, there's a group that's called the Shark Tiers Valley Group that operates down in, in Brookline and in Allentown and places like that with whom I had conversations with them.
Yeah, well, unless you have data to show me and to show this council at the table, don't single out the South Hills as being discriminatory more so than the rest of the city. That's my point. Do you understand that?
I understand that, Councilmember, that, that.
But you have no data. You have nothing that says, so many people in Brookline said, we will not take you in because, what do you have to back that up is what I'm asking.
I, I have no direct data on that and I, I'm sorry, what I had said apparently didn't come across as it was intended. My point was not to accuse anybody, any part of the city as having more of a problem than any other part of the city. This entire city, this entire county, this entire country has a problem right now.
But you said specifically the South Hills and I'm just wondering why you would say that if you don't have data.
He meant my side of town, okay.
No, I don't think so. I think he meant my side.
No, no.
Trying to figure that out.
We can follow up with the data for you, Councilman.
We can follow up with the data for you, Councilman. I believe what he's reporting back is just what was reported to him from the agency.
What was said, right.
Yes, what was said.
Verbally said, no data, nothing in writing.
Correct.
Okay. Well, that doesn't deserve a spot at this table, I will tell you. Unless you have data for me to say that my side of town or my neighborhoods are more discriminatory than the rest of the city, which is the way I heard it, Chris, okay, don't bring it to the table unless you have some proof. So I don't need any follow-up unless you have something black and white.
Understood.
I understand that that's how it was heard, it was not the way that it was meant, and I apologize for that.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, and then we said, so this is to put in a practice where people cannot ask you about your past housing, correct? No matter what it is, is that right? We're going to try to enforce landlords where they cannot verbally ask you, or in writing, I guess, either way, about your previous housing?
They can ask, they cannot utilize that information to make a decision on whether that person will be a good tenant or not. So in their decision for obtaining a tenant, and they have two equally qualified tenants, potential tenants, if one has a gap in their housing history, and they just make a snap judgment to assume that that person would then be an unreliable tenant, that is what we're looking at. So like, we understand that we can't stop landlords from asking for housing history and getting a better sense of, like, how long have you lived here? And, you know, that gets into a place of birth issue that we could talk about.
So what are we asking? What is this bill going to achieve? Tell me that.
We are going to assist the people who have a gap in their history.
I mean, does this have any legal standing, what we're doing, for anything in the future?
It will if you pass it.
With our consultations with the law department, it would have as much legal standing as any other protection that we've passed.
There's no affirmative burden associated with it, which I know is often the case, a question with adding protected statuses, is will this cause an undue burden on the landlords? And the answer, as far as we can see, is no. There's, we're not asking you to collect any additional information, we're not asking you to stop collecting additional information, we're saying, have a conversation with the people that are coming to you to apply for housing. If you have a question about a gap, ask them. And you can make a decision based on, like, the totality of the circumstances, instead of just seeing a gap or seeing, oh, they are also going to come to me, even though they have all of the other criteria involved. They're receiving support to get back on their feet, and that's, again, a prejudice that we're trying to overcome, so that we can give people a fair shot at housing, because it, as, you know, Councilwoman Kail Smith said, anyone could become homeless at any time. Like, situational homelessness accounts for about 80% of those who are unhoused. You know, where it's, you got injured on the job and accidentally, you know, as a result, ended up addicted to pain medication and can't pay your bills, et cetera.
There are a thousand reasons, I understand. Let me ask you this. So you said we have pretenders, so say somebody is, a report, I guess, would come in from somewhere, I guess, law, and say, we feel like this person has been reported for discriminating against somebody's past housing report card, whatever you want to call it. Then what is the next step, then?
So the commission's job overall with any of these protected statuses and violations to the Fair Housing Act or the Pittsburgh City Code is to do a neutral investigation.
Yeah. So our people will do that investigation?
Our people, yes.
From H R?
The commission's people. No, human relations, not human resources.
Now, who is that commission? Do we have a commission right now?
I'm sorry. Yeah, we're a 70-year-old agency that's been with the city of Pittsburgh since 1955.
So how many people are on the commission?
There are eight staff members, and we're supposed to have 15 volunteer commissioners, but currently we have 11.
I see.
But yes, we do have staff to do this work, we're currently doing this work.
So you would actually investigate? A call would come in, and what warrants an investigation?
Complaint.
Just a complaint.
Yeah, you have to meet the criteria to rise to the level of a complaint. It has to have happened within the last 365 days, it has to have happened within the physical city limits of the city of Pittsburgh, it has to involve a protected status as the motivation behind the Discriminatory Act, and it has to have the action. What was the violation? What was the housing harm? And if we can meet all of those, then we can take a complaint. And that is currently the majority of the function of the Commission on Human Relations, is to review those, and that's for things like race and color and national origin. You know, we have upwards of 15 protected statuses right now in the city of Pittsburgh.
So this would just be another protected status?
Yes, we're not asking for money with this. This is not, you know, this is not an ask of that kind. This is saying, hey, do we want to take a stand at the city of Pittsburgh to show that we don't align with the prejudice assigned to people who have these kinds of housing histories?
So say you get a valid complaint.
Yes.
You send people undercover to pretend like they're going to rent from this person, and then what happens?
No, 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 no. That's a specific situation. So if we had enough information, I'm not sure if you have any interaction with the Fair Housing Partnership of Greater Pittsburgh, okay, so they're the agency that does it. We're a Fair Housing Assistance Program, where we work with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and we take investigations on their behalf. So we are working for HUD to do these fair housing investigations. And so when we have an investigation, we take that complaint, we serve it to a landlord. They have 10 days to respond. And then the burden shifting begins a bit.
Okay, so we don't do undercover, we're not knocking on the door?
No, it's not undercover.
Pretending like we want to rent and, right, this is...
No, no.
You say investigation, you contact the landlord and say, we had a complaint saying you're discriminating because of the past report card of this person's housing? And then what? Then what's the legal action? Is there a legal action? So what happens then? So say you find a valid?
We collect enough evidence to say we have probable cause of discrimination, we immediately take it to a conciliation, which means we get everyone to sit down and try to resolve it with a settlement agreement. The whole goal of the commission is to remedy the discrimination and make sure it doesn't happen again. So we have public interest relief as a part of that, where we're going to offer training, we're going to offer policy review, we're going to do as much as we possibly can to assist the landlord so that they don't see another housing violation of that nature again. And to have the complainant be able to walk away and feel like the situation was remedied for them. If they were turned away from housing, will they now be considered because they had a valid application? If they were maybe charged additional fees because they had a gap in their housing history that made them an unlikely, you know, like, good tenant, then are they going to get those fees returned to them? And so that's the equivalent of what we would look for in a settlement. And should that fail, we do have public hearing capabilities, and our commission does have enforcement power, so we can take things to court if we need to.
Okay. I can't support it, but I feel it's kind of overreach, I feel like it's a lot of work involved on our parts. I feel like if a person doesn't voluntarily tell a landlord the report card, I think they will be judged by that. It's just human nature.
It's true. And a lot of housing providers are using A I these days to do an evaluation of their potential tenants, where they're looking at things from social media to their utility payment history, and they're getting all sorts of data that they can use to discern between, well, is A or B going to be a good choice?
At the same time, I will tell you, I know it exists. I personally worked with somebody, and I saw how hard it was for him to rent a place because he didn't have a current address to even tell them, speak about. And, you know, I mean, to a certain degree, you know, landlords got reason to have red flags, they do.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Thank you for the conversation, I appreciate it.
No, no, I appreciate you being here, so, okay, that's it for me, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley.
Thank you, thank you for being here, and thank you for the time last week, for the extended conversation that we had about this issue. The thing I really appreciate about the conversation, as well as bringing up this issue, is that, you know, it really highlights the complexity of our housing ecosystem and all the myriad of dynamics that play into housing instability and the housing crisis that we have. I think a lot of times it's very easy just to point at the rising cost of housing is really the only input that's creating, you know, the housing crisis and not, so many things that play into it, as well as people that have first or last month's rent, you know, they actually have the resources, you know, whether through, you know, some sort of support from a nonprofit agency or through their own wherewithal, that cannot find housing. You know, I think so often we just think about, you know, the person I was paying $600 a month for that apartment 10 years ago, that is now $1,300 a month, and that's the only reason, you know, why we have, you know, this housing crisis. So I think, you know, this issue, regardless of what side of the issue you are on, I think it's an important conversation to have, because I think it really, you know, widens our understanding of the whole variety of dynamics that play into this crisis, that we're all wrestling with. You know, just for the public's education, you know, when we say, like, housing status, could you just provide a definition of what that exactly means when you use the term "housing status"?
Yes. So the definition that we're adding to City Code will cover current or former housing status, and that includes any period of not having a fixed residence, and that can include, you know, being in some kind of transitional housing, a shelter, couch surfing, having spent time in a medical facility for whatever reason. It encompasses a lot. And we're looking at a person's history as well, so that they, if they have that gap, if they have some kind of, and we're looking also at whether someone was in private or public housing previously, because there's also this judgment that if you had been on Section 8 at any point in your history, you are also unreliable, because, well, you took handouts, and that's why we can't trust you as a tenant, even if they're no longer on Section 8. So again, not a source of income issue. So that's the housing status definition in a nutshell.
Yeah, I appreciate, you know, that, and obviously, you know, I shared, you know, some of my personal story, and I know Council President Lavelle is familiar with this as we go back so far, but, you know, dealing, you know, with my own mother's, you know, housing instability and coming home from college, and, you know, my mother sleeping on a park bench, you know, in West Park, and that whole process, and where I actually had to, you know, essentially lie on a lease and take ownership of a lease to get her an apartment. You know, I was actually, you know, still living with my father at the time, and, you know, and hopefully the statute of limitations is over, as I'm here in official government proceeding, admitting that 30 years ago, you know, I was not honest, you know, with the landlord, because I knew, you know, my mother had been on Section 8, suffered from paranoid schizophrenia, was homeless, was coming out of Bethlehem Haven Shelter, and I knew that there was no way she was going to get this apartment around the corner from my father's house, which I needed her to get in, because it would allow me to continue to be a caretaker in the most convenient, you know, way possible. And I share, you know, the empathy that I have, you know, for folks that are going through it, and my own personal, you know, journey of dealing, you know, with my, you know, my mother's challenges, and, you know, obviously, you know, God rest her soul, you know, as the 10th anniversary of her death comes up in November. So this, you know, is extremely, you know, important to me, you know, because I, you know, I lived in a situation where, you know, she had the resources she had first and the last month's rent, but clearly, there was, you know, serious gaps, as well as evictions, you know, that's how she ended up, you know, on the street, you know, she had a bad episode. Could you talk a little bit about testing? I just want to kind of elaborate as well, as all my colleagues' question of, you know, because I think we understand what testing is not, but what is, you know, testing?
We use fair housing testing in situations where we believe there to be some kind of disparate impact on a particular group of people. So I mentioned that we use it for familial status pretty frequently, because there are a lot of landlords that will either charge, charge an extra fee per child, which is illegal. They will, you know, charge a higher rate, or they'll just deny them entirely, because they'll base occupancy based on the number of bedrooms. So that's an example of, like, the things that we look for in a familial status. So with housing testing, and this is not something that we do very frequently, and it is getting more and more difficult to actually complete because of the federal regulations, but we would have folks that are trained to be testers, and they represent, these are people of Pittsburgh that are trained to go out and just recite their lines, they are, you know, not actual tenants, and they go and they ask questions, and then they will record their answers for reporting purposes. And every test does not show that there's cause for discrimination, that there's something going on there. We've had unsuccessful tests before, but we don't, we don't spend our resources lightly because we understand the value of the dollar and how scarce it can be. So when we send folks out to do testing, it's usually because we have a very strong feeling, or we already have an existing complaint that shows that this may not have been just a one-time thing. It could have, it could be a more systemic problem with that particular landlord. And I'd like to highlight that we understand that landlords don't know what they don't know, and a lot of times, it's not intentional discrimination, it's just not understanding the fair housing laws, you know, there's no, there's no school for becoming a landlord, there's nothing that, you know, mandates that you take this fair housing training. So just, you know, shameless plug, that we will do fair housing test, training, excuse me, we'll do fair housing training for free for anybody who wants it, and we do try to host those, you know, pretty publicly, at least quarterly, with the Fair Housing Partnership, so that we can, we're not trying to hide the ball. We want landlords to know what their responsibilities are, and so that we don't have to see complaints from them. We would much rather have a conversation and work through creating a policy or some kind of practice to avoid any kind of potential discrimination, because we just want people to be able to get in their housing, get in their employment, go visit any public service that they choose, and not be targeted with prejudice.
Yeah, and my final question is, can you just walk us a little bit through what the process actually would look like if this piece of legislation, you know, gets passed, you know, and I can actually just draw from my own, you know, personal experience, going back 30 years to my 20-year-old self, and was, you know, going around the North Side with my mother, trying to find, you know, an apartment for her, and feeling like, you know, that the gaps, you know, in her current housing status, you know, was an obstacle to, you know, getting out of Bethlehem Haven into permanent housing, you know, if this existed, you know, 30 years ago, what would be the next step, you know, for me as a young person and my mother to figure out, you know, what do you do? You contact human relations, but what, could you just kind of walk us through, like, what that kind of step-by-step process is, so the public can also understand what we're voting on?
Sure. And this will be a process as well for us to do some outreach and make sure that everyone understands what their obligation is as a landlord, but also for anyone that needs to report where they can do so, because this isn't a part of the Federal Fair Housing Act. This is something that we're saying Pittsburgh is going to take this on, and our folks at the commission will take this on and make this a part of our investigative process. So, yes, folks would have to contact the commission, we are in the office every day, so we have our folks answering the phones, we have an email address, we have a web portal where folks can submit an online inquiry to us, and that'll go directly to our case management system. Send us the details, tell us where it happened, when it happened, who was involved, what makes you think that it was based on your housing history, you know, as much detail as you can possibly provide us, so that we can assess for jurisdiction. And that, as I mentioned, will include being within the last 365 days, so the harm had to have happened in the last 365 days, had to happen in the city of Pittsburgh, and be some kind of violation of the Pittsburgh City Code that would show that it's a discriminatory act. And then we'll take, we'll set folks up with an intake, they'll talk to one of our investigators, they'll ask a lot of questions, and get as much detail as they can to form a complaint. The complaint will then be served on the landlord with all the details they need to have to respond to us. The period that we work with is the federally mandated period of 10 days, so that's, it's a bit shorter than our employment, which is 30. So they'd have 10 days to respond, they can ask for an extension. And then once we have both of those things in our hands, we will assign an investigator to actually conduct investigation. And they'll continue to work with the person who brought the complaint, to collect evidence and witnesses, whoever they may have on their side, to show this is why I think this happened, because they don't always have all of the information. What we do with our investigation is reach out to that housing provider and say, okay, you're being accused of this, what is your defense for this? Do you have a defense for this? And then we would ask information from them as well, like, okay, so in this time period, did you have other people who were qualified? Did they, did you ask for a housing history? How much weight do you put on a housing history? And then we can move forward with actually doing an analysis of was the law actually broken or not, based on the amount of evidence that we collect. And I'll say, our investigators are very thorough. We are in a space where we do more interviews than any other agency that I've encountered, actually, because we find so much value in actually getting that conversation piece with whoever was being accused of something, because they have a story, too. You know, it's not just the complainant that's bringing us information, the housing... The housing provider has a story too. And like I said, people don't know what they don't know. We're not try, we're not throwing the book at anybody over here. We do have the ability to issue civil penalties. I can't tell you the last time we've done that, and I've been with the commission almost 10 years. So I, I don't know, you know, beyond just trying to remedy what happened and get folks to sit down. And we're pretty successful with our housing mediations because people will be more willing to sit down with their landlord, um, and try to work it out, you know, find out. Or if they were, you know, a potential landlord, they'll sit down and try to figure something out. Do you maybe have another property with another unit that I could go into or something like that? So we, we really just try to focus on the remedy and letting the, the housing providers know, again, what they don't know so that they can move forward and not do the same thing again.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your advocacy. That exhausts my questions, Madam Chair.
And thank you for sharing with us, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comment first round? Um, I don't know if there's a second round comment. I'll make a, just a couple of brief remarks. Um, first of all, thank you for bringing this to us. And I'm grateful that Pittsburgh has a commission on human relations and recognize that most municipalities in Pennsylvania do not have their own commission. They have to rely on the state and then there's less capacity. So we're fortunate to have you. And, you know, just to illustrate the power of this type of legislation, um, I have my own story. It's not anything akin to what we've heard, um, today. But like, it's easy to pass these bills and think, mm, like there's, there's no enforcement teeth or there's very little proactive way that we can go in and verify it. It relies on self-reporting. But I've also found that over the years, after, you know, helping to shepherd through many different nondiscrimination bills, um, sometimes the sheer fact of having it down in law in black and white is enough so that the advocates, the lawyers, or the others helping those who are discriminated against can point to it before it even gets to reporting to you. Um, when we were, when my husband and I were in our first apartment, um, we wanted to buy a house. It, it forced us to have to negotiate the, you know, getting out of our, our lease agreement, our one-year lease early. Um, we were ready to pay, you know, first month's rent, last month's rent. We actually then found another tenant to take our spot. So there'd be a seamless transition to a new person renting the space. It was a single parent with kids. The landlord said, no, thank you. And we were able to point to the bill that says you can't discriminate based on familial status. And he, he settled with us. He let us out of the lease. Um, he didn't lose any money. We were able to get out and this family had a place to live. It was a great result, but it would not have happened had we not been able to point to city legislation in black and white saying you can't discriminate based on familial status. And I just think of this as one more. You can't, like, it might not be the thing that solves our housing crisis in the city. It's definitely not. But it's one of the tools that we have to say, if you are, you know, advocating for someone or you yourself are being discriminated against, sometimes even just knowing the facts and putting it before the person who's, who's engaging in that discrimination is enough to get a solution and get the housing in place. So, um, I'm supportive today and I'm supportive of so many of these, um, types of bills where they, on the one hand, feel like a big splashy news story. On the, on the other hand, feel like there's not enough teeth. But in the end are, you know, incrementally, they do make a difference in people's lives. So, um, grateful for you and, and your work here, and I'll be supportive today. Any further comments, second round? Councilperson Charlin?
Uh, yeah, I kind of gave up my, I, I didn't realize that we would talk about this as long as we did. So first round, I didn't, didn't say much at all. I just want to say that I, you know, I'm very supportive of this. Um, you know, and I appreciate taking the time to walk through, you know, or walk me through what, um, what we're really looking at here. You know, a- as we know, the, the, you know, homelessness specifically is, you know, kind of a continuum. It's a pipeline. And there's space, you know, in the, you know, folks right off of the street into the shelter space. But we have to free up the space further up the line when people become, um, more, more self-sufficient and, and need less intervention, um, and can live, you know, without having to have direct supervision. I, I think this is exactly that. It's freeing up the pipeline and trying to work with our bottlenecks there because we know that that is the biggest bottleneck, um, in this. So I, I appreciate you bringing this to us. One thing that, you know, I think is maybe misunderstood, you could still deny someone who is coming to rent from you if they have bad credit or have an eviction or, um, any of the other reasons that you might be able to legally deny someone, you know, to deal with you. But you can't deny them because there's a gap in their housing. That, that's really all this does. I mean, it does a lot, that, it's put simply, but, but impactful. Um, am I correct on that?
Correct, yes.
So that's something that, you know, I'm, I could not support more of, of freeing up our bottleneck and trying to create the situation where more people, we can now help more people get into shelters because the people aren't waiting in the shelter, waiting for, um, more long-term solutions. And that's what we should be looking for. That's how we, um, how we hold the landlords accountable, but also have the landlords, um, you know, be a partner in helping our homelessness solutions here. So I'm really thankful that, that, that you brought this to me, um, and, you know, could not support it more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, second round? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2242, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommenda, one, no. Affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Bill 2250, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning Article V, use regulations, Chapter 911, primary uses, to add restricted personal goods retail, to add specific requirements and conditional use application requirements.
This shouldn't hold two weeks.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a two-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill will be held. That moves us on to Recreation, Youth and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Can we read them all together?
Uh, there's, read them all together.
Okay. Bill 2194, resolution submitting the recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to name the playground within Townsend Park, the Bill Coleman Memorial Playground. Bill 2195, resolution submitting the recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to rename Herschel Field to Bessie Miller Field. And Bill 2196, resolution submitting the recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to rename the baseball softball field of Banksville Park from Tower Field to Bill Mullin Field.
Is there one more?
No, it was just those three.
Oh, did you read three? Okay, I apologize. So I just, Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Um, motion to approve.
Take it.
And then just brief discussion. Uh, we have a group, we have the highest number of veterans in District 2, living in District 2. And they have a group that bring these recommendations to me. And they brought recommendations for some of these fields, including Bessie Miller, even though she didn't serve in the, in the military. Her father started the Onala Club. She's been running the Athletic Association for 50 years. There was all sorts of, uh, reasons why they, they thought that, you know, she should be nominated. She is really great. And, um, she's also a world champion softball player. So it's great to have her recognition. But also Bill Mullin was my recommendation because Bill Mullin lives in Banksville. He was the sheriff for Allegheny County for a very long time. Um, he's also loved softball. And, um, Councilman Colquill and I are gonna be eager to dedicate this park to him in Banksville. That's it.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bills 2194, 2195, 2196, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Mosley.
Bill 2058, resolution amending Resolution 877 of 2024, authorizing the mayor, the Director of Innovation and Performance in the Office of the Mayor, to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Encapsulate, now doing business as Accenture, to upgrade the city's customer relationship management system and our related capabilities and processes by increasing the approved amount by $30,000 for a total cost not to exceed $1,125,755.33 over three years, subject to appropriation by city council in future budget years.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 20?
Yes, sorry.
Councilperson Charlin?
Yes. So we've had issues with this bill before. And I mean, have we resolved anything? I, I, I don't, I guess maybe interrogatory would be helpful. Doesn't seem like anyone's.
We did, she, we talked, she'll help.
Okay, yeah. We have interrogatory?
Yes.
Uh, yeah. Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, first of all, uh, I, tonight, today, it's in Councilwoman Mosley's committee, but I could have sworn it was in my committee.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's why, yeah.
So I'm a little confused by the agenda. So. So, I, I, I did have a meeting, um, and some communications with IMP, but a meeting especially with 311 and Councilman Colquill and myself. I didn't think, um, Councilman Colquill asked me for the meetings. I apologize, Councilman, if it would have been helpful to have you there as well. Um, so we were able to kind of work, talk through how systematically, um, it's IMP. So I'm, again, I think, I thought, I thought it was in, in my committee. Is hosting, I think almost weekly meetings. And council members or their staffer, welcome to join moving forward. And so I've already kind of debugged and responded to employees' requests. Because there were, you know, I, so I think it was good that council kind of discussed those and tried to hear from specific departments to figure out whether problems were being addressed. They do seem to be systematically going through and have made, from what we heard last week, quite a big up, bit of progress, but they're not stopping. And so they're gonna make sure, and again, some of them, some of them are very similar to the issues that I recall you bringing up, um, the last time we discussed this, um, at the table, where functions that previously existed for our staff, for council members, or through the 311 department, where you could very easily drill down to, again, for, for the public, we're talking about things like when you have a constituent request, right? Let's say you're reporting something that's happening in the streets, whether it's a sinkhole or it's an abandoned vehicle, the kinds of things that you might call either 311 or your council member for, that there is lacking that kind of GIS-ing, especially the GIS, the geographical information services, being able to put it into context easily, right? So the previous software, that was just a couple of clicks. Um, and so it's really kind of making sure that that base level of mapping supports the new software. So that will help. But also other functions that PLI may use about the kind of tracking a case through its history so it's not prematurely closed, that, God knows, we'd been working on for years. And we had finally gotten the previous software to, to, and systems to support. And then it kind of came up in the new transition. And so I think that's one of the things that I've heard being addressed. I'm talking vaguely, since obviously I'm not in the room, um, with the debugging. But, uh, my takeaway was that I was very confident that they were very methodically reaching out to make sure that they heard and captured every concern and were debugging and addressing them to meet the needs. So if there's any, any more detail you're gonna have to bring up, the Ministry of Staff.
Yeah, and I will note, sorry, just to note, we do, we have listed Jan Rather. And I don't know Wendy, if you're here for this bill or not, but we have Jan here, if, if you would like to bring someone up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to bring Jan up if that's okay, or anyone else that could speak on this.
You better be nice if he's in District 2.
Yeah. I'm always nice to Jan.
Wendy up here too?
Uh, sure, yeah. It also looks like Director Norman is, is online as well. Yes, I guess I'd like to introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon, Jan Rather, Office of the Mayor.
Wendy, 311 manager.
So, uh, I guess Director Norman, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Heidi Norman, Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance.
Thank you. So my concern with this bill has been that, in a lot of ways, it feels like we're, um, throwing good money after bad. That we are in a, um, we were, we had a system that maybe didn't do what we wanted to do before. Um, but now we have a much more expensive system that is still not doing what we want it to do. Um, and although some of the features have changed, uh, I, I don't, uh, no value add has been articulated to me, and I don't believe it's been articulated at this, this table, that makes that contract make sense. Now we're asking for an additional $30,000 to cover the cost of additional, um, logins because we thought the logins that we had were sufficient. Um, again, we're paying, you know, one of the biggest consulting firms in the world, probably, uh, to, to figure out what we need here. And they miscalculated what we'd be able to use. So, um, I, I'm still not supportive of this, where, where this stands now. I, I don't think that my concerns have been, uh, resolved. I do know that, you know, we looked at the contract. There is not a, uh, breakup's fee, so to speak, with Accenture. Um, I, I don't want us to put more money into the system when we've already had a, a system that provided basically what we're looking to do here. And it doesn't seem like we were willing to ask them to, to move forward and get that, get that system to work. So, um, if you'd like to respond to any of that?
Yeah, I'm sure Director Norman could speak a little bit more to, you know, some of the, the functionality that we're still hoping to get out. Because I hope everybody got the memo. But one of the biggest expenses really is the sales, Salesforce subscriptions. The actual platform that we are bought into, um, the year-over-year cost difference from Qsend, the previous vendor, is in the 15 to $20,000 range. So that is admittedly an increase. Um, a third of the increase was also the development cost of developing, building out the new platform. Um, that costs 368,000 of that 1.1 or 1.2 million dollars. Um, and I think I started going down my path and I forgot the last part of your question.
Um, I, I guess, so I, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm not actually sure even how I, I framed it as a question. But why is it that we chose to go with Accenture? You know, I guess probably at that time it wasn't Accenture. But one of the largest consulting firms in the world, they couldn't figure out how many logins we were gonna need. Now we have to pay more money for the logins. Um, I just, we, we're still spending more, way more money on this than we were on, on Qsend. Um, and the other, the other point that I wanted to make sure that all, other members were aware of, last time we talked about this at the table, the concept came up that Qsend did not bid, um, which we found out wasn't true. Qsend did bid on the, the previous RFP. They just, their name has changed.
Yeah. Um, and so that, you bring up a good point. So Qsend, um, during the rebrand, during the, the, um, RFP process, had changed their name to Catalyst. When the city put out the RFP, we had new requirements, enhanced requirements that we wanted out of this system. When Catalyst, formerly Qsend, um, responded to that proposal, their proposal actually came in higher than, um, Encapsulate's at the time. So at the time, we were under the impression that we would be working with this relatively small firm called Encapsulate. Encapsulate was later acquired by Accenture, which is how we ended up with Accenture. But the original Encapsulate proposal, the proposal that we're still with, and even with the $30,000, remains, um, less expensive than the proposal that we got from Catalyst, which is the rebranded name of Qsend. They had all of the same functional requirements. They responded with those functional requirements. And their cost proposal came in higher than Encapsulate's at the time.
So again, what, what are we getting that's, that's different or better?
I'm gonna ask Director Norman. I know that, um, she played a vital part in, like, putting, soliciting that RFP. Admittedly, from our perspective on the implementation team, um, you know, there've been some challenges that we had hoped to overcome at this point so that we could work more diligently toward those, um, improvements or those enhancements. Um, because of the way that, um, the rollout functioned, we've not, we're just getting to that phase right now where we can start to look at those enhancements. where we can start to look at those enhancements more diligently. But Director Norman, I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit?
Certainly, um, I'll speak on a couple of different items. Uh, so to clarify, what this current citizen relationship management system does is it gives us a unified view of the citizen engagement, um, and the, our constituent engagement with local government as a whole. Uh, Qsend was not a, a platform that offered many of the services that we're going to be looking forward to with this new system. So let me give a couple of examples. In Qsend, you would not be able to see all the different ways that someone who potentially moved from another city district into your district, you would not be able to see all the different ways that they may have been communicating and working with city government. With a platform like this, we can help to not only give anyone, including council people, a broader picture of how a particular person or family is interacting with government in terms of not only their service requests. So, you know, whether or not we missed a trash pickup, or they've asked for potholes to be filled, but also if they've had difficulties with, um, paying their top taxes to the city, or they have started new businesses here, and that we could see their business permits. Previously, we would have had to have looked in lots of different systems for that kind of information. With a more holistic, unified engagement and relationship management system like this, 311 is just the beginning, where they can request services. When they call 311, or interact with 311 in another way, we, that is only one of what I think of as a three-legged stool toward providing services to the city. 311 is the front door to our city and to our services. They take in the requests and then they assign the request or the ticket to the department that is responsible for providing the service. So both 311 as the intake and the department as the service provider have to work together. What helps to connect those is the platform. And that's really what we're talking about here, is the technology. The technology itself is not the service. In the future, in Phase Two, once we are beyond 311 and the, uh, implementation and enhancements to these, to the system for service delivery, we are going to get into things like what is a particular constituent, um, saying about government in the, in social media, where they are referring and putting a hashtag in for City of Pittsburgh, or for a particular elected's, uh, handle on social media, so that we can see like how we're interacting and whether or not, um, someone might be amenable to receiving a phone call and telling us a little bit more about how they feel about a program or a service that we are considering enhancing. You know, I listened to a long conversation, it was super interesting, I learned a lot about services to people who may experience homelessness and how they feel about someone, um, from local government coming in to assist them to find those types of, um, to find shelter and a residence, um, to house themselves and their families. Those are the kinds of things that we can begin to show when we have a more holistic view. And that's the type of thing that these platforms were designed for. Qular does not, did not have any of that functionality, but I think their intent by, um, being, merging with this other company and responding to the RFP is to get into that higher level business. Does that help to answer some of your questions about how 311 interacts with this and kind of where we're going? For the software at large?
I think it gives more questions than, uh, it answers some, but, but creates a lot more. Um, I, I would like to ask Wendy, how are things going on your end with 311? Your microphone's off.
Um, we're, we're making some progress. It's been a struggle, but we have been having weekly meetings, um, to discuss our issues and try to get them taken care of. Uh, because this is a, such a robust system, it does take a lot longer to fix things that are broken, or customize it.
How, how are the 311 employees dealing with the, the change? I mean, is it seamless for them?
No, it's, it's, it's been a struggle for them to get used to the new system.
Okay, so, I mean, I have an example right now that, that came through my inbox a couple hours ago. The property in the Southside Slopes, where we need to pick up, um, a bunch of trash there. And the moment that the person who puts it in, uh, the request gets, uh, it's closed, and that's the end of the work order. And I'm, like, that's a problem we need to figure out how to solve because no one did that work and, and Public Works didn't go out there in that time. And, um, so this pile of trash is still sitting there, um, in the slopes. And I'm hearing from Director Norman that we're also going to be expanding the, the work that this software can do in terms of being able to like survey people's social media to figure out how they feel about the government. I, I would rather us stick to picking up the trash and figure out how to do that and get that part right before we talk at all about expanding into any of these, um, kind of, I mean, kind of troubling capabilities that we might have. I mean, I, I don't know why 311 system should be concerned if someone's having trouble paying their taxes. I would want the 311 system to be able to, you know, let Public Works know that the trash needs to be picked up. I think that's the role of, of the system here. I, I, I don't know, I, I don't know how we came to, to this place here. I mean, I, I was never the biggest, um, champion of Qsend before. I think there were some issues with it and some things that I would have liked to see changed. I, I don't think this is moving in the right direction in any way here. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm very not supportive of this, so.
If you, just real quick on the one, um, one of the features that is new is the duplicate detection that this software offers. And I, I'd be interested in hearing more about the specifics about that location to see if that's a parameter we need to adjust with our duplicate detection, to see if it's being closed because it's already been submitted by somebody a previous week. One of the things that, you know, we are, the system tries to avoid is that duplication of work so that a ticket doesn't get submitted on one, on Monday, somebody goes out on Wednesday, and somebody who meant to submit on Tuesday, um, can't submit on Thursday, not knowing that the work has been completed. So it ties those tickets together to say, hey, this work might have been done, or somebody might have already reported this issue. We have noticed a couple of places where the parameters are a little bit off, um, and we're working to refine those.
Do we notify people when we think there's a duplicate issue there?
Yeah, it, it sort of depends on the way they submit and whether they submit with contact information. So Wendy, I believe the call takers, when they're submitting, they, um, get a notification on the internal side that it was a duplicate. Um, on the external side, the, they should also get a notification either via email or in the app that it came up as a potential duplicate.
Yeah, um, I should have it pretty quickly here. I don't think there's anything, no, no, nothing about duplicate, just, uh, just that this has been closed.
All right, let's, if you could share that information after this, I'd be happy to take a look.
But, you know, I, I mean, like, let's focus on the blocking and tackling and if someone's calling our, you know, 311. I, you know, and I, I don't think, I don't think it's any, um, I don't think there's a judgment on the folks that work in 311, but I do think that 311 is not a popular service. Like, I, generally speaking, if we were to poll it, I don't think it would come out as a, as something popular. I don't think this is making it any better. I think this is like, we're, we're now creating more hurdles. Any, any additional capability, I'm not understanding how neighbors are going to, you know, have better services from it, so.
I mean, there's, there's, understandably, 311 is an unpopular service. I think, you know, just quick caveat that I think, and again, you know, city workers are trying to do their best with a lot of, with the limited resources. It's very rarely like a 311 issue, sometimes there's a 311 platform issue, but it's, a department is not able to perform the work at the, the speed somebody expects them to. And so, you know, just a couple of other enhancements that this service allows us to do, and again, require additional refining, are to provide that communication about the service level agreement. How long should it take to, um, close a missed pickup or a pothole? Um, again, there's, we're learning more because the city hasn't had those previously about what it means to implement those. Um, I remember Councilmember Strasburger reaching out in April when, um, you know, at the end of a really rough winter, like, we're telling people it takes 14 days to close a pothole, while we're looking at the data and coming out of winter, it takes us more like a month. Um, but in the summer, it might take seven days. And so looking at ways to adjust that information seasonally. Some of the other things, and, you know, part of, partially this is related to the reduced number of licenses, but we are able to, with the new system, ask questions about where a service request is located. We're able to do some GIS mapping to say, hey, this is a pothole on a state road. We actually don't do maintenance on state roads, here's the number to call, um, PennDOT. So, you know, there are ways in which, like, we are prior to folks even getting directly in touch with the city, that we are starting to funnel them to the correct resources. Um, part of the reduction in licenses was making sure we didn't need licenses for folks like PennDOT or that PRT didn't need 10 licenses, or PWSA didn't need 15 licenses. We were able to really constrain that and say, what are the core city services that the city offers? And through the service request types, direct people to the, to the right locations, which I think is actually the best customer service we can offer, is to not take in a request that we can't handle, right? So those are just some of the examples. Again, there are still other ways that I'm sure this system and 311 are posing challenges. I've submitted 311 requests that I have not gotten like satisfactorily addressed as a resident that I would love to continue working on developing through this platform or whatever 311 system we use.
I, you know, I, to, one of the things I, I feel like I have to mention in community meetings weekly, you know, someone submits a 311 because they want a house demolished. And the house doesn't get demolished by the next month.
Yep.
And, uh, they're mad at 311. It's not a 311 problem, it is, you know, resource allocation, uh, uh, the house didn't reach severity to be torn down, whatever it needs to be. They're mad at 311, one for that. Though, that's, I think that's, that's one thing that's kind of a, you know, a bigger problem that we're running into here. But when like missed trash pickups are happening and we're closing those cases out and we don't get notified, notified of them, it just, I, to me, it's like, I, it doesn't seem like this is a good way to, to run a business here. The only other thing I guess I'll ask kind of on the record here, the Office of Nighttime Economy has had trouble getting licenses. Um, they have provided, you know, huge service for us and, and many of the other council members in terms of, uh, noise complaints at, um, loud bars or house parties or things like that. Have we been able to solve the problem with Office of Nighttime Economy?
We, they're on our list of, um, folks to get this next, so what we're asking for with this 30,000 dollars is 60 additional licenses. We currently have 120, we'd like to get up to 180. By like reallocating how the levels that these licenses are allocated at, we've been able to only get this like relatively marginal cost increase of 30,000 dollars. Understanding it's an increase, but, you know, on a per license basis, it's actually relatively low. Um, but Public Safety, um, Office of Nighttime Economy, the Safer Together coordinators, the police, um, are going to see the largest increase in licenses so that we can cover more shifts, so that we can cover more of like the different types of work that they do. So they're one of the folks that will directly benefit from additional licenses.
But they had licenses in the old system?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I know they did, yes.
Yeah.
And so one other question I have on this, because we're now adding additional money to this contract, does this bid, the bid that they put in that you're saying was less than, um, than Accenture, or what do they call them, so it's Encapsulate? Does, is their bid now more expensive?
Oh, I mean, oh, prior to, to, then whose bid? It's still.
More expensive than?
It's still, I believe, um, based, I know Gwen was looking at these numbers, based on the, the, this increase, still lower than what, um, Catalyst, um, quoted us in their proposal.
Okay, all right, uh, well, thank you for coming to the table and, you know, I appreciate your, your time on this.
And one thing I'd say, you know, again, I appreciate folks who don't have questions, but if you do have questions, I have an open door policy, met with, um, Councilman Coghill, Councilwoman Gross just the other day. If you have questions, if you want to pop into that meeting, you know, we have an open door policy on this, um, 311 implementation. We really want this to be a product that works for you and your constituents as well, so appreciate any feedback that you have.
Thank you, Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, thanks for being here. So, um, yeah, I mean, as far as this particular bill goes, it, it feels like I supported the hold back prior to, um, gosh, was it recess at this point? But now, I mean, if this is like, if there are people who need access to an app to do their job and they don't have it, then I, you know, I would encourage members to move forward on this one. That said, um, I definitely think that we do need to have a broader conversation about, not just about 311, right? But also, I mean, it's, it's really like a, a process analysis, I think, for us to understand and for the public to understand because, um, there are, there, I mean, there's clearly areas where, I mean, what happens with a 311 request when it gets to DPW, when it gets to PLI, when it gets to DOME, right? Like, um, that, that is often, even for me as a council member, hard to understand, right? Uh, things that seem simple, taking a very long time to get done. And other things that seem like they might take a long time to get done, getting done very quickly, right? So, so just for, for the public to understand that, um, better. Uh, I think too, um, I, I, I'd love to understand, and again, this isn't necessarily the forum, that's why I think like a post-agenda or something like that on 311 where we have the directors and, and yourself, uh, Wendy, to, to kind of talk through how it works. Uh, I think too, you know, I mean, again, for me personally, I understand that people like to call 311 on the phone, but the reality is, is that calling on the phone as, you know, is, is really the, the least transparent way for someone to go about logging an issue, right? Anybody, right, if you, you are better off using the app or send, you know, ideally using the app because then it's all located in one place, but, you know, sending an email because then you have a trail of the issue as opposed to like writing down a number. But we do have residents who need to use the phone, right? That's, that's what they're most comfortable with, maybe they don't have access to technology and that's so, I mean, you know, what do we have staff versus, you know, would it make sense to have a, a more focused staff who is there to answer the phone, who really has the full understanding of like the mega issues that are happening, you know, in each part of the city? Or maybe staff that is directed to one part, you know, who has the expertise like you would at a council office, right? To be like, oh, I know that one, let me give you all the inform, or you know, whatever it is, right? Like, I can really give you the in-depth information about what is going on here. And, and it's hard, right? I, I know that people can be very rude on the phone sometimes, you know, a lot, and, and that's difficult to deal with from a sort of customer relationship standpoint. And then, yeah, like what, and I, I would, I would like to hear from the directors, I mean, wha- what does it look like, right? Like a 311 comes in to Division Three and, and what happens to, you know, where does it go? Who's, does it sit in someone's inbox, like what, so I think that that would be help, I know it would be helpful for me and I think maybe also for the public. So, yeah, I mean, this technology is, is hard, it's expensive, you know, it's, it's expensive. And embarking on, on new technology upgrades is, is, is difficult. I'm a little concerned, uh, the, the idea of the, um, social media monitoring. I mean, I, I, I understand it in theory because there are folks who will post something on social media as opposed to calling it in and, you know, preferences that you call it in, however, I think there's enough, um, enough sort of concern about government retaliation and think, you know, this notion that, that the idea that we're sort of, you know, keeping an eye on people's social media and what they're saying about us would probably be better left, you know? Better not to do that, just for the public's peace of mind. But anyway, yeah, I'm supportive of this today, just to kind of get people what they need to do their work today. But I do, I would welcome a larger conversation just about 3-1-1 and how it works, and how the public engages, and, you know, and then how our departments are working with it on their end as well. And any commentary, excuse me, if you have any response, feel free.
I'm sure Wendy could probably speak more to it, but, you know, I think that, I appreciate your point about, you know, calling in versus using the app, and I really do think there are sometimes trade-offs. I know, talking to Wendy's call takers, they'll sometimes be like shooting me a message while they're on the phone with somebody to get the right information, right? And ideally, we would be able to build a lot of that knowledge into the knowledge base that exists on the 3-1-1 app so that, you know, as somebody starts to type in "pothole issue," they're actually getting information or a mini article about potholes, or getting potholes fixed, or whatever other, you know, issue type they have. So again, there is flexibility within the platform to increase the amount of knowledge that we're sharing with folks. You know, one of the other tools that I think we've been able to use a couple of times is service alerts, where we can push notifications out to people who have the app. Again, there's trade-offs there between having the app in your pocket and first being somebody who can just get on the landline and call somebody and not being able to share those updates with people. But yeah, welcome the conversation about, like, what happens with 3-1-1 tickets. I think it's taken me a long time to realize that, even after two and a half years at the city, and, like I said, still sometimes struggle on the citizen side of things.
Yeah, I mean, I think one thing that really comes to mind is snow, right? Like, it, there's, it is, it is not an efficient use of anybody's time to have eight different people calling 3-1-1 about the same street that hasn't been plat, right? Like, if there was a, an IT solution to that, in the same way that like a Duquesne Light, when they have an outage, you go on the website, you can see right there, I know we have our snow tracker, and some of this stuff feels, but it's expensive, right? That's always the trade-off, right? Is it's very, it's, it can be very expensive and take a very long time to move away from the processes that ultimately cost you more money sort of over the years, right? It's tricky. Anyway, Wendy, sorry, you were gonna say something. Go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that one of the boons of getting this product was to be able to share our service level agreements with customers, so they know when they report a pothole, should they expect five days, 10 days? And we've established service level agreements for almost every issue type.
Great, that's good to know. I guess that's it for me. I appreciate you coming in and also the discussion, because I know, yeah, it's hard, and it doesn't feel, I mean, I agree with the councilman, it doesn't always feel, as someone who uses 3-1-1 all the time, right? As a, you know, as a councilperson, but also really just going around, like, my district, right, putting in, it doesn't always feel, I do sometimes kind of wonder where those tickets are going, especially, and I have the luxury, of course, of following up directly with the foreman or whoever, right? But everyone else doesn't have that, so, thanks.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Coghill?
Thank you. Well, first, I want to thank you for meeting with Councilwoman Gross and I just last week. I wish I had, I should have invited you. You pretty much asked like every question I asked her, so it was, you know, a lot of what I heard last week. And I apologize if I dragged you there, and it's not your committee. I'm still glad you were there. I'm still glad you were there regardless, but, oh, it is, yeah, I figured, yeah, Director Norman, it's gotta be your committee. Yeah, all right, okay, so, so I think we had the right person there in you, and I do appreciate your meeting. And everybody here knows I'm not an IT expert by any means, however, I do know when people call me from, these people shall remain unnamed, I haven't even told Director Urbannick, but calls from 3-1-1 I had gotten saying, please, please, do something about this new system. It's not as efficient, it's not working, and we talked about this, you know, the other day. And I had the same concerns that Councilman Charlin had, of course, and, you know, I just wanted to get to the bottom of it. I mean, outside of 9-1-1, I feel like 3-1-1 has to be our go-to, and, you know, things have to be efficient. Even things as far as like, you're working with the law department, right? They count on you to look back as to phone calls or things that came in, which you're not able to do right now. So, so we can't even assist the law department right now, there are headaches, and I think, I think Director Urbannick is, I don't want to say you're downplaying it, but if the employees I talked to, it was like, the sky has fallen, basically. They just can't, you know, deal with the system. However, and I'm not going to get into all the reasons why we're here and all that, okay? We talked in length about that, and I don't think anybody's really interested in hearing that, but the bottom line is, as of now, we're kind of stuck with this, okay? As to, we don't want to have to issue a new RFP, a new RFP will have to go out, and we're gonna talk, we're talking months and months, and possibly a year before we get this resolved. Where we're at, as far as I feel personally, is that we have to make this system work for us. Specifically for me, 3-1-1, right? You know, my own office has issues, I will tell you, and I've heard other people talk about it. So, but for me, I want 3-1-1 to be efficient, mainly, and I appreciate, like you said, to have, invite our staffs and people to the training, but I am, again, more, more concerned with 3-1-1. Now, Yon, you had said, and I'd like to hear from Director Norman on this, that by January, these issues will be cleared up for 3-1-1. I'm not talking about all of them, there still might be some growing pains, but I want Wendy and 3-1-1 to work as efficiently as they did before, and I want to be assured of that. And if not, we said by January, I said by January, then we'll look at, put a new RFP out. So I want to hear Director Norman, if she feels the same as to these issues, problems, whatever you want to call it, will be cleared up by January, and they will be functioning as well as they did before.
Hi, thank you. I did have a conversation with Assistant Director Gwen Moore earlier today to ask about the status of the, not only the weekly meeting, but the list of technical issues that have been identified, and how quickly we are moving through those along with Accenture to resolve some of the problems that we've been having from a technical standpoint. And she has reassured me that those are all slated to be resolved by the end of this year.
Okay, well, that is comforting to know, and I do also, in our conversation from last week, realize that new problems may come up as we add additional licenses, new issues, new problems may come up. But I would just like the focus to be on 3-1-1 for the time being, until we know that all of their issues are settled, and I hope that we can just concentrate on that and solve their issues. Does that sound reasonable?
I think it's a good idea.
Good, good, good. Okay, and I was glad to hear that it's really not more expensive. My initial thought was, we're paying a lot more money for something that's not working as good, and that, to me, is just like, it's just no good. So, but in fact, the old company we were using, which was Catalyst?
It was, Qsend became Catalyst, submitted proposal as Catalyst.
Yeah, so their proposal was actually more expensive than the one we settled with. It might not be if we end up our labor and hours and time, and we've integrated and trying to solve these issues, but, and the licensing will be pretty much done after the $30,000 from today. Were we gonna be still adding another $30,000, $50,000? How's that?
So, the Accenture Encapsulate platform, they have periodic releases that basically upgrade the whole platform, and we get those free of charge. So if they totally revamp their solution, add a bunch of upgrades, we get those for free. We have talked to them to see what other cities are doing. There are, you know, some customizations that other cities have elected to do to add XYZ functionality. Those are always open to us, but by no means required. The platform works as is with the contract that we have.
It's a two-year agreement, I believe?
So this is, this is, covers the increase in sales force licenses for approximately the next year and eight months.
And so what you're saying, Yon, is you're not going to be coming back for additional licenses that we need to have? You may come back for something we want to add, but nothing that we need to have, correct? This 30,000 additional license, we feel we need to have, correct?
Yeah, and I'll add too, we, part of our, you know, current existing agreement is for 200 mobile licenses, where a worker can access 3-1-1 closed tickets from their app. We haven't uncovered the full functionality of that, and we believe that as we refine that, improve that, go through some change management, we can actually reduce the number of folks who are using the full desktop licenses in the future. So, you know, we might be at, we realize we started too low, we want to go back up to cover the needs, but our hope is that, you know, over the next 18 months, we can actually come back down from that 180. It might be nice to have that 180 as a buffer in case you hire new staff, or there's transition and stuff, but we don't expect to have to go beyond that unless there's, you know, some mass hiring spree, which I don't foresee.
Right, and we spoke when we met in the conference room as to, you're going to give us an updated list as to when you knock out the issues that 3-1-1, specific for me, are having, and you knock out three of them, because we know when we solve the issues, right? Every week, we get together, and hopefully you solve a couple of whatever the issues are, right? So you'll keep us updated to that. Okay, so I wish we just would have had the old system, honestly, and kept the old system. It's too late to turn back to that, obviously. I think we're in a position where we have to approve these funds for these additional licenses, and hope that we can work out the kinks and, you know, problems that we have with the current system, and by January, we will know, and Wendy, we will call you back, and you say, everything is beautiful now, right? And then, then it's no problem. So, so, okay, so we'll monitor it as we go, I hope, and, you know, I'll be supportive because I feel like I have to be, or we have to be. I don't think the alternative of putting a new RFP out and, you know, all that is where we want to go. It's probably more aggravation, time, and money than I'm willing to spend. I'm just gonna hope for the best with the system that we agreed to, and I hope it works not only for 3-1-1, but, you know, across the system better for us. So, thank you, Madam Chair, that's it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Second round? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2025-2058, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. One, no? So noted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It moves us on to Bill 2133.
Bill 2133, Resolution Amending Resolution 336 of 2024, which authorized the mayor and the director of mobility and infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the redevelopment authority of Allegheny County for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $100,000 to develop a transit plan in the West End by increasing the grant amount by $100,000 for a new total project cost of $200,000.
Motion to hold for one, or motion to approve?
Second.
And then, motion to hold for one week at the request of the councilwoman.
Second. Second discussion. All those in favor of a one-week hold on Bill 2133, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held. New papers, Bill 2173.
Bill 2173, Resolution Amending Resolution 543 of 2022, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Cooperation Agreement with the Urban Redevelopment Authority in Order to Receive a Grant from the Pennsylvania Budget Office Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the Renovation of Warrington Recreation Center in the Amount of $1,500,000, and Authorizing Expenditures for the Stated Purpose to Update Accounting Information for the Local Capital Match.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2173, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our stating committee meeting agenda.
That's it.
Meeting announcements. On Thursday, September 25th, at 11:00 a.m., council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 2025-2151 as it relates to a Pittsburgh water conditional use. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the hearing. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, September 30th, and standing committees meeting on Wednesday, October 1st, both at 10:00 a.m. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline, and you may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Anything from members? Councilwoman Gross?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, we motioned, I motioned for a public hearing on the PWSA sale, the sale of the water assets to PWSA, but it occurs to me now, when, you know, we're kind of thinking about how that should go, that we really actually need a post agenda on explaining it. So I'd like to motion for a post agenda on the bill that is being held as standing committee for a public hearing on the sale of the city's $2 billion water infrastructure assets to PWSA for a dollar.
Thank you.
Second.
All those, can I ask a question? Would you like it to be a post agenda combined with a public hearing?
Sometimes those get to be very long, so maybe we can work with, so I'm just gonna motion for that independently, and then we can work with the clerk, and, and members, if they have any suggestions or questions, and the council president to schedule it.
Understood. All those in favor of cable cast post agenda for the sale of Pittsburgh water, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We will schedule that. Anything else from members?
Just to wish everyone a happy Rosh Hashanah, if you're celebrating tonight, the next few days.
Yeah, likewise, wishing everyone a Happy New Year who's celebrating. Hope it brings sweetness and health. If there's nothing further, I will take a motion to excuse the absent members. We had actually all members today, so a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.[1760.11]